Members present, though, uh, council member, uh, Range and I are here virtually. And everyone else is in the council chambers. Um, for those that are able, I invite you to, uh, join us of, uh, pledge allegiance. Uh, so yes, please rise and please remain standing after the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the class of the United States of America and to the republic for which
Public, for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God, indivisible. Liberty, liberty, which has its own. Just want to take a moment to remember a couple of longtime Madison residents who we lost over the last few weeks. Thompson McDaniel, he was a native of Nashville, Tennessee. He's been a longtime Madison resident, passed away on April fourteenth at age eighty-five. He's survived by his children and Catherine Thompson, Jr., and Sarah, in their respective spouse spouses of nine grandchildren. He was preceded in death by his wife for forty years, Mary, uh, Baron McDaniel. Born in Nashville in thirty-seven, he earned a bachelor's from Vanderbilt and there it's where he met Mary. They moved to Greenwich Village in nineteen fifty-nine as he was wa- working on Wall Street. And soon afterward, he was drafted into the army where he was honorably served for two years during peacetime. And he had a long, successful career as a bond trader and, um, and after retiring from Wall Street, he founded along with several, so several associates, the Bank of Somerset Hills, now known as Lakeland Bank, and is also president of Morris County Golf Club from ninety-six to ninety-nine. Also, we remember Emma Lepore, longtime Madison resident, on, uh, passed on April twenty-first, just one day after her ninety-first birthday. She's survived by her two, two daughters, Angelina and Giovanna, and her son Giovanni, also known as Mike Lepore, and five grandchildren. She was predeceased by her husband, Arkan Hines, Michael Mike Lepore. She was born in Mount Fusco, Italy, married her husband, Mike, and emigrated to United States in sixty-two with her young family in this cell right here in Madison where she lived till her death. Um, she's career spanning several decades with Madison Board of Education as a head cook at Madison High School. She took great pride in her work, retiring in ninety-nine. So let's take a moment to remember Thompson McDaniel, McDaniel and Emma Lepore. And let's pass our thoughts on to the families and friends that they leave behind. Thank you. They may concede it. We have a motion for the executive minutes of, um, April tenth, twenty-twenty-three. Oh, no, I'm passing that one. Uh, you see, there's a motion in second?
Second.
Thank you. Ball in favor?
Aye.
There we go, not again, okay. And a motion for the regular minutes of April tenth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Ball in favor?
Aye.
All right, w- welcome all, even though I'm not there with you. Uh, with the taste of Madison on Monday and the, uh, we had the subsequent shifted meeting, uh, for this week. So I come to you virtually as Eric also had to do the same. Um, and speaking of the taste of Madison, it was a great success with a great turnout. Certainly plenty of great food from our restaurants and thank, thank you to all who attended and all the restaurants that gave up their time and their food. The event is a sponsorship with, uh, by Rotary, Madison Chamber of Commerce, and the Downtown Development Commission. And certainly a chance to really highlight what Madison's all about. And other happenings over the past two weeks included the annual Madison Little Leagues, uh, Little League and the Girl Softball Parade. This is a decades-old tradition that kicks off the season with a march down Main Street to Dodge Field. And it is always an impressive sight as you look down Main Street and see the, uh, you know, what looks to go forever of all the, uh, players marching down there and then sitting down the outfield at Dodge Field. Um, and on April eighteenth, I wrapped up my school reading tour of all three elementary schools, at Kings Road School for their family reading night, which was fun as always. And Wednesday, I hosted the Madison High School Government Academy. This is a program for students all across the county who attend Madison High for traditional courses, along with an emphasis on learning about local government and, uh, other levels. And they spent the morning learning about local government from the Madison perspective. And, uh, that afternoon, I attended, uh, the annual EV Expo to cut the ribbon, not only on the expo, but also Madison being recognized and recognized as Destination Electric. This came as a work that we, that's been done under Lisa Ellis's, um, leadership in securing grants for and the ins- actual installation of charging stations. So Madison will now be marketed as destination for those that, um, own electric vehicles. Just a handful of, uh, New Jersey communities are on that list right now. And encourage you to take a look at, uh, just search, uh, Destination Electric and you'll see how they lay that out. And, uh, this meeting's, uh, Drew update is the news of support that we have from Senator Cory Booker and Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill. They have each supported funding for the Drew Forest in their respective senate and, and house special funding packages. Each grant would be for five million and would go towards the funding of the forest preservation. The, the big if is Congress will have to approve these grants before they actually become a reality. So we got our fingers crossed, but we truly appreciate the effort they have made to, uh, help out, to preserve it, a beautiful forest. And, um, also, uh, just so you know, the next council meeting on May eighth is when we will, uh, select the person to, um, fill out the recently vacated, uh, council seat by, uh, Deb Collin, that person was, would serve until the general election in November. And now to avoid the awkwardness of presenting proclamations from afar, I will ask Council President John Hoover to present two proclamations, one for the annual Letter Carriers Food Drive and a surprise proclamation, which I will let him, uh, break the news about.
Liam Espinoza, good to meet you.
Thanks.
Okay, whereas hunger affects one day Americans, including a million of children, senior citizens, and veterans, a reality that has been tackled by the U.S. Letter Carrier, Carriers through their food drive, which is held annually on the second Saturday in May. And whereas the Stamp Out Hunger Food Program Drive is the country's largest one-day food collection that provides residents with an easy way to donate food to those in need. And whereas the NALC Food Drive is held in ten thousand cities and towns in all fifty states, District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, the Virgin Islands, and Guam, and is helped by many local volunteer groups, including the United Way, Salvation Army, Catholic Charities, National Guard units, American Legion, and Veterans of Foreign Wars, Boy, Boy and Girl Scouts, Rotary Clubs, and ARP groups. And whereas in the thirty-one years since it began, the food drive has collected about one point eight two billion pounds of food. And whereas the timing of the food, whereas currently more than forty-two million Americans are unsure where their food, their next meal is coming from. And whereas the timing of the food drive is crucial because the majority of food donations are received through the Thanksgiving and Christmas holiday seasons, and by spring, many food banks and pantries are depleted. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, and on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, and encourage residents to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in order your mailbox on Food Drive Day. Further, I commend the National Association of Letter Carriers for initiating the humanitarian projects that will directly benefit those in need in our community. Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate it. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, yes, we're ready, we're ready. This year, last year we did good, but this year, I believe in Madison, we're gonna do better.
Great, thank you very much. There you go, thank you. Thank you, sir, thank you very much. Liz, would you join me now, please? Celebration of National Clerks Week, April eighth, thirtieth through May sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government ex- exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest public, among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government in other, at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center regarding functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of office of municipal clerk, notably Elizabeth Osborne, Caridad Reyes, Bonnie Mulcahy, and Helene Corlett. Now, I, on behalf of the mayor, Bob Conley, mayor of the Borough of Madison, and on behalf of the governing body, do hereby congratulate and recognize the week of April tenth, thirtieth through May sixth as Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Elizabeth Osborne, and our staff and the municipal clerks for all the vital services they perform and their exemplary, uh, dedication to the communities they represent.
Just, not really, but I'll say, it's an honor and a privilege to serve mayor and council on the residents of Madison. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Here you go.
Thank, thank you, Liz, we surprise you every year, don't we? All right. We will move to report from committee. Senior Affairs, Council President Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Downtown Development Commission Director of Business Development. Downtown Development Commission will hold its next meeting on Thursday, May eighteenth at seven fifteen in the Hartley Dodge Memorial Building Committee Room, second floor, right next door. The public is invited to attend. The Nature of Reading Bookstore will held its opening day ribbon-cutting and reception on Earth Day, Saturday, April twenty-second. They are now open for business, please visit and welcome them to Madison. There is still time to volunteer or enjoy all the great activities at Madison Green and Clean on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, from nine o'clock to three o'clock in the afternoon. Email ddcrosenet@rosenet.org for more information. Here are some of the, uh, items that will be included. Arbor Day Celebration, the kickoff event, you'll hear my voice, my lovely voice again, uh, eco-friendly, excuse me, eco-friendly vendor tabling by native plants and seeds from Toad's, Toad Shade Wildflower Farm. Get free tree seedlings from Friends of Madison Shade Trees, native oaks, dogwoods, and eastern rosebuds, red buds. Get trusted advice on, on leaving the leaves and saving the stems, organic lawn care, providing habitat for pollinators, and more from Madison Environmental Commission members. Chat with the New Jersey Watershed Ambassador about where our drinking water comes from and where our rainwater goes. Learn from the Climate Action Committee and Sustainable Madison Advisory Committee about key climate actions for two thousand twenty-three that are recommended for endorsement by Borough's governing body, body, and steps you can take to lower your energy consumption and reduce carbon dioxide emissions. Talk to Friends of Drew Forest about community-wide efforts to save the Drew Forest. Find out about quiet communities, how quiet communities is helping towns reduce health environment, environmental harm from noise and pollution. Discover hiking trails and great economic, echo events of, uh, hosted by Great Swamp Watershed Association. Learn about environmental justice by talking with the representatives of the Wind of the Spirit. Echo, echo, echo-friendly presentations and activities. Visit the New Madison Public Schools Pollinator Habitat, three fifty-nine Woodland Road, ten AM to twelve PM, with project leaders Joan McCurry and Bridget Daly, to learn more about pollinators and native plants, why we're leaving the leaves and saving stems, and, and the best way to mulch. If you can, help us pull a few of the weeds while we're, we're at the RSVP. Presentation of the Museum of Early Trees and Crafts Education Annex, ten to eleven thirty AM. Free screening of a recorded talk by Madison, for Madison, by acclaimed ecologist and entomologist Douglas Talamy, based on the bestselling book Nature's Best Hope, A New Approach to Conservation That Starts in Your Yard. Dr. Talamy, uh, Dr. Talamy's eye-opening talk, which includes answers to questions from Madison residents, is a must-see. Musical performances at Hartley Dodge Memorial, ten AM to three PM. Madison and the Chatham's Spring Yard Sale will also take place on the twenty-ninth. Volunteer for townwide spring cleanup, approximately fifteen sites throughout town. The Madison Area YMCA is hosting our annual Healthy Kids Day on April twenty-ninth from eleven AM to one PM. Our Teen Leaders Club is going to be planting seedlings at the event amongst other activities for children and families such as bounce house, sporting games, face painting, and more. It is a free event and open to the community. Only registration is required at flexregprogramdetail@madisonareymca, activecommunities.com. From the Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber is accepting nominations for this year's Extra Mile Award Initiative to recognize and celebrate individuals who have provided excellent customer service in our community. No, nominations are open to everyone in the community, and we encourage residents, business owners, and visitors to nominate individuals who deserve recognition in their outstanding service. For more information, please contact madisonnjchamber.com. Ladies Night is scheduled for Thursday, May eleventh, from five thirty to eight thirty PM, Madison Community Arts Center. The new exhibit Should Have Been There by Haitian-born photographer Patrick Colair of Black Jazz Musicians and Performers is on the walls at the center until Sa- Saturday and May seventh. Starting at eleven, May eleventh, the gallery will feature works by Madison High School students in the Advanced Placement Visual Arts Program. There will be a reception from five to seven PM, and the art will remain on the wall until May fifteenth. Gallery hours are posted at madisonartsnj.org/macac. Uh, Spotlight Kids will present their production of Emma from Friday, May, April twenty-eighth through Sunday, April thirtieth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, John. And now for Finance, Finance Board Clerk and Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. The Office of the Tax Collector reminds us that second quarter property taxes are due May first. Note that the Tax Collector's Office is now located in the Finance Department on the second floor of Hartley Dodge. Residents can bring their payment to the Tax Collector's Office, or they can leave their payment in the drop box located in the Clerk's Office on the first floor. Now we turn to the budget. Tonight, we will have the budget hearing and vote to adopt the two thousand twenty-three municipal budget. Nothing has changed since the introduction of the budget one month ago, so the numbers in tonight's budget resolution are one thirty dash two thousand twenty-three are exactly what was discussed on March twenty-seventh. To put things in perspective, I want to underscore that tonight's vote includes the actual hearing, as we have been hearing about and discussing the budget for many months. Borough staff started working on the budget last summer, and council has had seven public meetings on the budget. All these presentations and the information can be found on the annual budget process page on Rosnet. The budget is presented in multiple formats, including a one-sheet budget summary, the official eighty-six-page state budget document, plus a newer document created by the state called the User-Friendly Budget. Later in the year, the Borough will be mailing out a flyer that includes charts, data, and an even more simplified budget for reference. As I mentioned, the council voted to introduce the budget on March twenty-seventh, and by state law, we have to wait at least twenty-eight days before we have a hearing, that's tonight's hearing. The state established this twenty-eight-day waiting period to make sure the public has an opportunity to review and comment on the budget. Simply stated, the twenty-eight-day waiting period is for transparency. The council takes the budget and transparency very seriously. All the council discussions and previous presentations are recorded and available to view whenever you want, and all of the reports and schedules that are presented to council are available on Rosnet. I believe this is an excellent and sound budget. There are no changes to the municipal services provided to residents, and we continue to support a robust capital program, including repaving roads, purchasing necessary equipment, and investing in our infrastructure and our built environment, including this summer, an all-new redesigned and landscaped Cook Parking Plaza, Cook Plaza Parking Lot, and a few other projects I'll highlight in a moment as part of the engineering report. As a reminder, this is a calendar-year budget that runs from January to December. We did pass a temporary budget at our reorganization meeting in January so we could keep the Borough running, and so that new elected officials, like Council Member Tom Harlan-Pudis, could get involved in the budget right away. I joined with the Borough Administration and the Finance Department in thanking all the members of the governing body and the public for being engaged in this process and for offering great insights and comments throughout. Now, it's the end of April, and almost one-third of the year has passed. It is, excuse me, it is time to vote on this budget, so our department heads know what they have to work with, and so we can recommit, as we do every year, to the business of serving our residents. Next is the engineering report. The Cook Avenue Parking Lot Project that I mentioned will have a construction bid opening on May second at ten AM in the courtroom, and the MRC Basketball and Pickleball Court will also have a bid opening two days later on May fourth, at the same time and place. The Memorial Park Footbridge Repair Project is now complete and looking great. Our slate of roadway milling and overlay projects was awarded today to Shifano Construction with work, uh, scheduled to take place this summer. Other construction projects scheduled for this summer include the Green Avenue pedestrian crossing improvements, the construction of improved Memorial Park Trails, the Dodge Field Accessible Playground Project, and sanitary sewer lining projects. We are pleased that all of these were funded in part through New Jersey DOT aid or community development block grants. Madison Public Library interior renovations, for which the library received a nine hundred thousand dollar grant from the state, will be advertised tomorrow with a bid opening scheduled for June eighth. The Public Works Department reports that Parks Department continues to line all the fields and that we had a very successful opening day for softball and Little League, as the mayor mentioned. Big thanks to the hard-working crew that keeps our fields in good shape for our players. DPW was also able to perform some concrete repairs to the dugouts at Rosedale before they were repainted, and they're looking great as well. The Road Department is filling up, is filling potholes and fixing fencing, and Public Works also installed the Jersey Barriers for the start of this year's outside dining program. A special announcement about Arbor Day, uh, this is something that the Shade Tree Management Board and Friends of Madison Shade Tree has passed on for me to let people know about. Madison is celebrating Arbor Day this Saturday, rain or shine. In the case of rain, the celebration will take place in the rotunda of this building. Madison's commitment to trees and green spaces goes back a long way, almost forty years now. Shade Tree Management Board Member Nancy Bruce has, for the last twenty-five years, organized and overseen the Arbor Day program and done all of the paperwork and processing that allows Madison to receive the annual Tree City USA Award and Tree City Growth Award. So a huge thanks to Nancy for helping Madison be recognized year over year for our commitment to our canopy trees and open space. This year at the Arbor Day Celebration, we are honoring the many contributions of Shade Tree Management Board Member Vince Licari, who we remembered this year with gratitude following his passing in January. We will be planting a tree in Memorial Park this spring in his honor. Also on Arbor Day, we will have the presentation of the Tree City USA flag to Madison for the thirty-eighth consecutive year, and the Tree City Growth Award for the sixteenth consecutive year. We will enjoy Arbor Day performances by our elementary school students, including instrumental and choral music, original poetry, and from St. Vincent's, the Maypole dancing. There will be a giveaway of a hundred and fifty native tree seedlings, together with information about each species and how to plant a bare-root tree. Also, uh, this Saturday, we are scheduled to have the Townwide Yard Sale, uh, from nine AM to two PM on the twenty-ninth. However, it may be postponed because of the projected rain. A decision by the sponsors, which is that the Chatham's, Madison, and the Great Swamp Watershed Association, will be made tomorrow afternoon and posted on Rosnet and social media, so stay tuned for the outlook for the yard sale. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, utilities, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. From the, uh, from the Electric Department, the Electric Department installed two new riser poles for the service upgrade at three eighteen Main Street, which is Rosewood Condominiums. The department completed the new upgrade of three-phase service overhead transformer bank, poles, cabling, and meter wiring for Starbucks located at three oh six Main Street. In anticipation of future home construction and EV charging station installations on Wayne Boulevard, the department is currently working on the new pole sets, transformer upgrades, and wire repairs. The electric line clearance program will commence on April twenty-fourth for a fourteen-week period. And finally, the department is preparing the underground ductwork for, for our fiber-optic cable runs between the substations, which is part of our ongoing control and equipment upgrading. From the Water Department, the Water Department excavated and repaired a water service line to one of the drinking fountains at the MRC, and the department, with the assistance of the Mechanics Department, repaired a flush ground hydrant that is used to supply outside contractors with construction or landscaping water. And as liaison to the Patriotic Celebrations Committee, I just want everybody to know that this all-volunteer committee, made up primarily of ve- veterans, uh, is currently planning the Memorial Day Parade. And as they pointed out, this is a very solemn occasion, uh, in light of what's going on around the world today. Um, and they're looking at every detail, they're working to get a dumper of participants involved, so I just want to give a shout-out to them, and I'll keep you updated as they, uh, proceed along with this, with Memorial Day being May twenty-ninth. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And in public safety, Mr. Range.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, from the Police Department, Detective Sergeant Ken Shannon held a substance abuse warning signs presentation entitled Hidden in Plain Sight to Madison Junior School Parents last week. This presentation also included members of the Madison Chatham Coalition and members of the Chatham Borough Police Department. The purpose of the exhibit is to help parents and other adults see the environment with new eyes, to see the warning signs of substance abuse that may be obvious once they are pointed out, and then help them have a conversation with the team to stop dangerous behaviors before the worst happens, addiction, legal trouble, injury, or even death. And from the Fire Department, Lieutenant Robert Dunn and firefighter Evan Webb completed a forty-hour Fire Officer One course at the Union Counter, Union County Fire Academy. This past Sunday, uh, at approximately four AM, Madison's firefighters, along with neighboring fire departments, responded into Morristown for a three-alarm fire on Catherine Lane. All occupants made it out safely, there was one minor firefighter injury. The cause of the fire remains under investigation. And lastly, tonight, uh, big news from our public safety departments overall, um, with the new, uh, municipal trunk radio system going live this week. This is a project that's years in the making and largely funded through the Federal American Rescue Plan funding, uh, that we were awarded a couple of years ago. The Madison Police Department went live, along with DPW and Electric Utility earlier this week, and Fire and EMS will join them by the end of the week. Beyond the municipal entities, this new radio system will allow other organizations, uh, such as Madison Public Schools, St. as Madison Public Schools, St. Vincent Schools, and Drew University, and other partner of public safety entities, integrated communications access in the event of an emergency. A huge thanks to Police Captain Longo, Fire Chief DeRosa, and Michael Felicié in coordinating these efforts to get the system up and running. Thank you, Mayor. That's all for tonight.
Thank you. And health, Mr. Helen Putus.
Mayor, one, uh, one item to report to the borough's financial change with regards to other initiatives, but there will be a power outage in the central business district in the coming week, so the, our Board of Health Department is working very closely...
Sorry, Mayor. Let's start again. So, one, one action item to report from the Board of Health, that there is going to be a power outage temporarily over the weekend around the central business district, so the Board of Health inspectors are working closely with the administration and the local business owners and restaurant managers, who will be affected by the electrical utility maintenance next weekend. Melanie is the director. She's been pleased with the cooperation of the restaurants. They all received a formal written notice in person about some power outage guidelines from the FDA, and the inspectors will be out on Sunday and Monday to follow up with them after the power outage is over. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And now we move on to the budget, which is very well set up by the, this is when you may open up the hearing. You may come up and ask questions or comment on the budget. If you're asking questions, we will capture all those questions and answer them as we close the hearing, either by through council discussion or from our CFO. So, at this point, I open the hearing. For anyone wishing to comment or ask questions on the budget, please step forward, and as you do to the lectern, state your name or address, write the same on the clipboard. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we give you a one-minute grace period. And remember, this is just on the budget, so anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing. I now ask for a motion on Resolution one-thirty dash twenty-twenty-three, resolution of the Borough of Madison finally adopting the twenty-twenty-three budget and tax resolution.
Mayor, I move Resolution one-thirty dash two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Any council discussion? And the only council member I can see is Bob, so if there's discussion, I just ask that you do it in order, starting from John Hoover and working on around. Any council discussion or further comments?
I would like to comment. Mayor, if you want to...
Microphone?
Okay, Mayor, Tom Harland-Putus. See me? You don't see me?
Yeah.
You can't hear me. I just want to, I just want to compliment Jim Burnett and his team on putting this whole budget together. I'm looking at the user-friendly version, which actually does give some pretty good information, Jim, so it's good that you shared that with us, and thank you very much. Yeah. Other than that, I think that's a well-balanced budget for the community and keeps us in a good, stable place. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Tom. Any further comments?
Mayor, I'd like to add that, as I mentioned earlier in my comments regarding the budget, I think the fact that we have heard about this budget now seven times, we've had detailed presentations, is, as I've said before, a testament to the administration's commitment to transparency. In other communities, who are also going through municipal budget hearings right now, the first time the community sees the budget is the night it's introduced, and people scramble for twenty-eight days to try to understand what's in there and comment. The fact that we have had the opportunity to discuss and comment on the budget for as long as we have, frankly, leads to a little bit of an anticlimactic adoption. There's no one here to comment. We have thoroughly exhausted, you know, every source of information, and I would much rather have, you know, this, a situation where everyone feels comfortable with the information we have than to feel like we are trying to rush something through in a short period without public engagement and the transparent process that we appreciate and enjoy here in town. So, I want to echo Mr. Harland-Putus's thanks to the finance department, to Jim, and to Chrissy. It's been an enlightening last seven presentations, and thank you for the hard work you put in to make this information accessible to all.
Very well said. As I pointed out, this is kind of anticlimactic when you do, you're as thorough as the borough of Madison is and to our council and our team. I am obviously very involved with other towns and what they do, and I don't think anyone comes close to this, and so it's, I think, one of the reasons why we have such a small group, because, as you said, Rachel, we've covered it pretty well, inside and out. Any other comments from the council? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Oh, the title or the lineup? Okay, I have the title or what's lined up? I'm not sure. Oh, um, I have one second. Let me find my resolution here.
Yes, one-thirty twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. So, you want me to read?
Turn your mic. Turn your mic.
Be it resolved that the council, whoops, hold on, right. Be it resolved that council members of the Borough of Madison, County of Mars, that the budget herein set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation of, for the purpose stated of the sums herein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of fourteen million five hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, item for municipal purposes, six hundred and forty-nine, I'm not sure I'm saying these correctly, six hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine twenty-three for the open space recreation farmland and historic preservation trust levy, and one million four hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and seventy-three for the minimum library tax. Again, we have a motion and a second. All right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we moved it, and now we just, the vote remains.
Okay. So, I will do the roll call again. Okay.
Right.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harland-Putus?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Well done. We now move on to communication and efficient.
None received, Mayor.
All right. And now we're on to the first of two invitations for public comment. This is limited to our discussion items, which there are none tonight, and the resolutions that are part of the consent agenda. I will go through those resolutions in just a second, so you know what you can comment on, and also know when we get to that part of the agenda, what is going to be discussed. These are the Resolution one-thirty-one, Resolution rejecting bids for mass utility building roof repairs and authorizing repick. The, uh, two primary bids were flawed. Resolution one-thirty-two is approving probationary firefighter list, which will be existing two years. Resolution one-thirty-three is setting salaries for full-time non-union personnel. Resolution one-thirty-four is authorizing contract to Facility Solutions Group under the inter-local purchasing system, national cooperative tips for purchase of LED light fixtures at, uh, not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. Resolution one-thirty-five is supporting establishment of Veteran Affairs Center in northwest New Jersey. We have, we have passed a previous resolution, and this is redoing it now that we want to send it also to Representative Tom Kane. Resolution one-thirty-six is ratifying special event permit to allow use of Summer Hill Park by Boy Scout Troops America Patriot Pack Seven and Troop Seven. These are various events through the year. Resolution one-thirty-seven is authorizing special event permit to allow use of Summer Hill Park by Boy Scouts of America Patriot Pack One-twenty-four, one-twenty-third. Resolution one-thirty-eight is canceling substantially completed capital improvement ordinance seven, uh, twenty-twenty-two, and that will, uh, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars balance will be transferred back into the capital fund. Resolution one-thirty-nine is ratifying salary increase to full-time confidential employees excluded from union participation. This, uh, is follows what the unions get as increases. Resolution one-forty is appointing William Kirin to a position of substitute crossing guard. Resolution one-forty-one is awarding contractor Shifano Construction for paving improvements under Morris County Co-op in an amount not to exceed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this was funded through ordinances, um, two twenty-twenty-two, two twenty-twenty-two, and ordinance eight twenty-twenty-three. Ordinance one-forty-two is authorizing farmers market for twenty-twenty-three. It's coming up. Excuse me. Resolution one-forty-three is appointing Joseph Montegna to a position of substitute crossing guard. And Resolution one-forty-four is authorizing execution of developer agreement with the Madison Mall Apartment LLC for development at two ninety, two eighty-six, two ninety-four Main Street. Those, the resolutions, may comment on any of the public wishing to comment on those resolutions, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And we now move on, since there's no agenda discussions, we now move on to ordinance three or four. Please read the statement.
The ordinance is scheduled for a hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on April the tenth, two thousand twenty-three. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call ordinances for second reading at, title, ordinance, title. Ordinance twenty-five dash two twenty-three.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter ninety-four, attachment three, appendix C, entitled Electric Utility Department Rules and Regulations.
I open the hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty-five dash two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harland-Putus?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-twenty-three adopted and filed. I ask the clerk to publish notice there, newspaper filed according to the law. Ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-three.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter ninety-four, appendix A of the Borough Code, entitled Electric Utility Regarding Net Metering.
I open hearing for ordinance twenty-six. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-three.
I hear second?
Second, sorry.
Thanks. Um, any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harland-Putus?
Yes.
All right, I declare ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-three adopted and filed. I ask the clerk to publish notice there, newspaper filed according to the law. Ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-twenty-three.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter ninety-four of the Borough Code, entitled Electric Utility, to amend the rules and regulations of the Electric Utility Department and set forth requirements, fees, and rates for customers who feed electricity into Madison's electric system.
I open hearing on ordinance twenty-seven. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-twenty-three.
Any council discussion?
Mayor, I know you can't see me, so I'm just going to briefly chime in to say, similar to what I said at the last meeting at the introduction of these ordinances, it's exciting to have these be adopted and bring Madison's electric utility into the twenty-first century in terms of our ability to do net metering, introduce more renewable energy into our local grid, and support these moves through clarifications to our rate structure. So, this is, what comes across as a kind of technical thread of ordinances is really a gateway to moving into the next phase of implementation for renewable energy. So, this is an exciting night for those of us that are following along with this development.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harland-Putus?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-six. I ask the clerk to publish their favor, now we're on to the second invitation for public comment. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward, state your name or address, write just on the floor, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but it's supposed to be a one-minute grace before anyone, please step forward.
Yes.
My name is Mary Ann Belloc, and I live at fifty-two Glenwild Road. Concerned for the declining animal population, I am grateful for Madison's efforts in regards to saving the Drew Forest. Animals of many species have found their habitats destroyed. Habitats are being destroyed by both human development and climate change. Birds thrive on the forest edge. The birds that call Drew Forest their home or waystation include blue jays, cardinals, tannigers, titmous, finches, and chickadees, and probably more. In the forest, they find food from native plants and raise broods, allowing future generations to continue. Twenty years ago, I watched a mama turkey, a wild turkey, lead her brood from the Drew Forest through my backyard into a patch of woods between Woodland and Glenwild Road. She was probably headed into Lewanica Park. Wild turkeys nest on the ground in dead leaves at the bases of trees, under brush piles or thick shrubbery. A few years ago, we saw a wood duck with her ducklings wandering through the same, in the same direction. These birds live in wooded swamps, where they nest in holes in, up high in the trees, and they are one of the few duck species equipped with strong claws that allow, that can grip the bark and perch on branches. Contiguous habitat units are areas of continuous natural cover, separated by roads, developed areas, or agricultural lands. Ideally, these areas are connected with other similar areas so that the animals that use them can move freely to other forested areas and habitats. I wish there were more patches of contiguous, contiguous forests to enable these birds and animals to survive. Thank you, Mayor Connolly, and council, for pursuing a solution with Drew University to save this special place that we have here in Madison.
Thank you so much for your comment. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for May the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up, uh, ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter one ninety-five dash twenty-nine-point-one of the Madison Borough Code, entitled Zoning Map, to adjust the CBD one, CBD two zone line for block eighteen oh-two, lot eleven.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Council discussion? This, this addresses, there are several lots that cross from one zone to another, and in particular, on the block between Elmer and... on the block between Elmer and Main Street. And so it's CBD 1, CBD 2, and this allows for a better planned development for the property by just shifting on this particular block. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Howland-Putus?
Yes.
And ordinance 29-2023.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, Appropriating $250,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of pole-top capacitor banks and accessories.
Mayor, I move ordinance 29-2023.
Mayor, I second. Council discussion?
Mayor, I'll just add a sentence of clarification about this ordinance. This purchase of pole-top capacitors for our electric utility represents a needed investment to improve and harden our local grid. In part, it's required by our interconnection agreement with JCPN, but it's also going to improve our grid as we continue to invest in it, to prepare it for additional loading and peaks and valleys in electrical usage across town. And it's a meaningful capital investment in one of the borough's most valuable assets, which is our local grid.
That's excellent. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Howland-Putus?
Yes.
All right. And now we move on to consent agenda. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 131-2023 to 144-2023.
Second.
Any council discussion?
I have one, Mayor.
Roll call vote, please.
Can't let you go without having a question. Resolution 134, 2023, which is tips for the purchase of LED light fixtures. So are we going to have some light fixtures added around the borough? Jim, Rachel, right? Yep?
These are historic lamp fixtures.
Oh, so that we're changing out some of those historic lamps? Oh, that's great. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Howland-Putus?
Yes.
All right. There is no unfinished business, so approval vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
Not the vouchers. For the current fund, $4,236,152.57. From the general capital fund, $291,108.3. From the electric operating fund, $499,870.24. From the water operating fund, $27,205.16. From the water capital fund, $53,124. And from the trust, $10,912.7. The total is $5,118,372.7.
Mayor, I move with the payment of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Howland-Putus?
Yes.
All right. Under new business, a couple appointments. This one I'm just going to announce. It does not require council consent. Maureen Byrne, Wallbrook Circle, one-year term through December 31, 2023. This is library board trustee. She is going to be serving as the alternate to the mayor on that board. All right. And I'd like to make a follow-up appointment requiring council confirmation. And this is Shade Tree Management Board, and this includes some shifting of alternates. So Brian Monahan, Green Hill, will move into unexpired terms through December 31, 2026. George Limbach of Noe will move into the alternate one slash unexpired term through December 31, 2026. And Robin Tryon of Ferndale Road, a new appointment to alter two-member, unexpired five-year term through December 31, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve those appointments?
So moved.
Your second. I did it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. We are on to item 21. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, Mayor.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, all. Thank you for putting up my picture on the screen. I'm always human from the club. Everyone have a great week and enjoy green and clean.